Fair at the middle, you doing alright?
But.
Y'all get plenty of rain last night?
Oh, yeah.
It sound like most of the storms are heading south and they just listening to them through the rain.
Yes.
Between March middle and it it came good rain. When it go with.
We need the rain.
Two inches in my house.
You mean?
Wow.
Is that Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be there. You do what?
I got the intention.
I'm sure we got one somewhere, I ain't seen this.
Six o'clock, maybe then.
I'll be there.
I'm used to this, I forgot how to use it. That time.
You have a mouse on your desk and she can now.
Yeah, you got the. I don't get the world. I had to try. It's not natural. Yeah. I don't know. That was. They way good.
Well, it's. There's a dead. Good. There's a. That's. Yeah, I want to be very proud of what what now.
Listen. Are you?
Good.
Good, thank you.
Okay. You gotta help. Yeah. Then you're gonna do something.
King is bringing your mouse.
Yeah, it might say it's supposed to rain all day, but you know. Morning, sir. I am well, he was. I'm good, thank you. One, maybe. I'm good, thank you.
Three times.
There's Kenny's armful of papers.
When you hear our news and so.
More than my tires.
You did. Yeah, I'm not saying hi to either. I was on our ears. There's King. Playing there.
Yeah.
You got the mouse with me. Water. She didn't bring him out. That'd be great.
Email.
Alright. This here. Well, yeah, yeah. I didn't have a call that you have.
Yeah.
There we go.
Now.
Think on your thing looks like a river. Go down.
Yeah.
There, now you can see your. And they're gonna take it straight to. Then once you get there, the attached documentation, you can scroll right through it and start going. As you look at the minute. Click on the name.
Yeah.
Hey. You know, you can scroll right down the memory.
And that's the time of day.
Yeah, maybe not. Uh, span correct. Not for them.
Goes into the minutes.
Yeah. Are you gonna handle it?
Got you.
Thank you.
Got you. Thank you. Thanks. Oh, no. Oh, you're sick. I'm running back.
They were. Oh.
Are you? Yeah. Good. Good. But this I just want money if I do. But that. Thank you.
Then I'm gonna be like. Yeah, we will never. Long.
Operator is not part of anything. I'm not touching. You ready soon?
Alright, would you please rise? I've asked. Uh, Dan Tarnow with uh, Greats Bible Fellowship Church to open up in prayer.
Pray. Father God, we thank you for being our God and we thank you for everything that comes to your prayer. Lord, we know that you are as great as the God as you are with us, our universe, our creator, our sustainer of life. Father, we know that you're interested in what's going on out here today in this room. We've acknowledged that by commissioners and judges asking us to lead this prayer. So, Father, we we know that they want your wisdom, your guidance, your counsel as as this group leads our community. Thank you for the service that each one of them gathered in this room, they are giving and serving our community with. So, God, we thank you for this community in which we live, the land of the free and called the brave. So, God, today, let's just speak to each heart, every decision that's made, Father, that might be made in the air or your perfect will in in our lives. And so, we just, we pray your blessing upon each one uh, that are gathered here, whatever's going on in their lives, in their homes, in their families, in churches. We just pray your blessing upon this entire county, Father, with your vicious blessing. And we pray you for loving us and providing your son for our salvation. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Alright, place to American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and ten blessed, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, you may be seated. Alright, I call this meeting to order at nine oh one A M. on uh, Wednesday, April the twenty sixth. And we do have a forum present, all commissioners are present. Uh, are there any general announcements? Like to remind everybody that we will have the National Day of Prayer uh, in the courtroom across the hall on uh, Thursday, May the fourth at uh, somewhere between noon and uh, twelve forty five. It'll be occurring. Any other announcements? Do we have anybody sign up for public comments? Other comments would be on general, the agenda items, no comment. Alright. Consent agenda, the consent agenda, are items considered by a routine by the Commissioners Court and will be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on these items, unless the judge, county judge or commissioner requests them to be removed from the content agenda and considered separately. And there are five items uh, that are listed on the agenda. Is there a month, uh, which is, I'll read them. Consider dispensing with the reading of minutes of the Commissioners Court approved for the minutes of March the twenty ninth, court meeting and April the twelfth. Consider approve county bills for payment as submitted, consider uh, and ratify of county bills as submitted. Discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty three budget bill, uh, budget amendments. Uh, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by offices and departments of the county. And uh, item F is discussed and consider acceptance of the March twenty twenty three financial and investment report of the county treasurer. Uh, do any of these items need to be separated out? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Norton, is there a second?
Second person.
Alright, motion uh, motion has been second, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss consider placing a no through truck signs on Van Zant County Road twenty one thirty two.
That's our judge, this is my commissioner, this is my, I have a problem with trucks going back and forth on county road, avoiding state highways, so I make a motion that we uh, but I know through truck sign up on Van Zant County Road twenty one thirty two.
Second, pray. Motion made second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number six, discuss consider placing a no through truck sign on Van Zant County Road twenty six oh four.
Judge, Commissioner, same thing here, trucks going back and forth, avoiding state highways to get to their project. So, I make a motion that we uh, place no through truck signs on Van Zant County Road twenty six oh four.
Alright, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Order.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number seven, discuss consider setting the speed limit to thirty five miles per hour on Van Zant County Road thirty seven twenty six.
So, move it, Pearson.
Okay.
Second, pray.
Okay. Uh, is there any uh, motion been made in second, is there any discussion?
Yes, right, like, like, uh, just let everyone know, and Mr. Barton, we're working on at least in three and four possible uh, changing the speed limit to all road, county roads to thirty five. But we're gonna need to have a public hearing and things like that to give the public an opportunity to talk, so hopefully it's coming.
Okay. And for those of you who don't know, uh, by law, if there is no posted speed limit on a county road, it's sixty miles an hour. So. Alright, motion has been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number eight, discuss consider setting speed limit to thirty five miles an hour on Van Zant County Road forty five ten.
Motion, Barton.
Okay, motion made.
Second, Pearson.
Second, uh, any discussion? The same as, same as the previous one. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss consider storm drainage issues at the east annex.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to bring y'all up to date and and especially because uh, Mr. Barton and and you judge were not part of the court when the previous court uh, gave me permission to work out there. We're making progress on that uh, storm drainage. Uh, but I wanna come back, it's getting back to get time where the ground's gonna be correct. Uh, I still, for us to fix that, hopefully fix it, the only way to to help big is the property that's across Highway sixty four from the east annex. The water cannot get away from sixty four for all the trees and debris that's grown up in that little creek or or draw, that whatever you'd like to call it through there. So, the estimate for uh, that to be claimed out is four thousand dollars uh, by Jeff uh, Calum and uh, which is a very fair price, I believe. And I just wanna get the permission from y'all and also the the uh, I'd like to reconsider the uh, part of the the drainage work that I'm doing, I was gonna put a a cupboard in across the driveway of the fire department. That if it does, it's gonna kind of eliminate the usage of the property behind the fire department. Uh, if if they ever wanna put a building there or something, so I've uh, wanna redo that and run that drainage right through the, between the two buildings. But to do that, I'm wanting to cut the concrete, so there's gonna be a little extra cost there in in cutting that concrete and removing it. I can, first thing, three can remove it, put the uh, deal in, I'll just have to get a company to saw the concrete and then we'll have to get a company to pour the concrete, but I don't know what that'll be, I would say no, no more than uh, twenty five hundred dollars probably for both cutting it and re pouring the concrete. But uh, I'm gonna make a motion for the court to give me approval to move ahead if that's y'all's uh, pleasure.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion? Uh, what about the uh, uh, clearing this brush across the street? You didn't make a motion, you gonna do a separate motion on that or?
For me to move ahead with that, with that's that's, I thought that was included in my motion. I made a move ahead with having that brush cleared across the street.
For four thousand.
Yes, sir. And 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 that's to remove the brush, straighten it up, uh, pile it and burn it and then dispose of what's left of the F three burn. And I'll amend that to include that in it.
Alright, is there a motion, or you made the motion to amend it, is there a second to the amended motion?
Yes, I agree.
Alright, all those in favor of amending the motion to include the uh, across the street work? Say aye.
Uh.
Okay, motion, uh, motion has been amended and approved, any further discussion? So, we're looking at approving for twenty five, uh, sixty five hundred dollars total, right?
Somewhere in there. Okay.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss consider plat revision on lot four in Wildwood Ranch, twenty twenty one subdivision located on Van Zant County Road thirty eight twenty.
Yes, sir, now, let me refresh y'all's memory on the plat revision uh, where they're uh, creating more lots. That's when the uh, the person that wanting to do this comes to us, we have to set, we had posted on our website for thirty days and we have to have to set a date in the future when we're gonna discuss this. And so, uh.
A public hearing?
That's not public, it's it should be discussed in here, but we have to see, the people doing the uh, plat revision, they have to notify, this is by state law, everybody that's within so many feet of their property that they're gonna revise this plat. And in that notification, they have to tell them when the Commissioners Court is going to discuss that. And uh, so, I wanna set that date, what was forty five days from the day being taken on on our next regular meeting? Uh, be forty five days, I'm sorry, I didn't have my calendar.
James, my first.
So, I'd like to set the date of June twenty first, that's our regular Commissioners Court meeting, that will, we will discuss whether approved or not of this plat revision on that date. In that way, that'll give Scott Town to post it on the website and and uh, the the people applying for this, they'll send out the notifications to their neighbors saying the Commissioners Court is gonna hear it on that day. That's my motion.
Okay. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, motion made, say any further discussion? To establish the uh, June twenty first, twenty twenty three as the date, we will have this uh, present, presentation. All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Uh, oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss consider plat approval from Ben Wheeler County Wood, County Wood subdivision located on Van Zant County Road forty eight twenty three, Van Zant County Road forty eight twenty five in precinct four.
This is mine, um, the uh, landowners come in there, he's got everything done, everything's checked off, so we just gotta get it approved. And motion approved.
Okay. Uh, motion has been made to approve the plat, is there a second?
For a second, uh, for, uh, please add for filing purposes.
For filing purposes.
Second, Pearson.
Okay. Alright, is there any discussion, further discussion? On this, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss to approve a plat for private cemetery located on Van Zant County Road forty six oh five.
This is mine also, uh, Ms. Mary, what's your name, Mary Bryant, they've got, I think, ten or fifteen acres in Ben Wheeler or in Primrose area. And she wanted to have her husband and her buried on their land and her husband passed away. And uh, she wanted to be around just then, she had to go through the process, we got the process done, she's got it planted. Uh, where the cemetery is gonna be registered with the state, it was a cemetery and uh, she went through all the paperwork with with me and Susan and um, so we're gonna let her have a private cemetery on her private land, it's gonna be planted as a cemetery.
Okay.
So, and it's motion, and it's on file, the right key. On file. Uh, so I'm motion to approve that.
Alright, motion has been made, is there a second?
So, move.
Alright, motion made in second, is there any further discussion? All paperwork is complete, it's just a matter of us approving. All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discussing consider approval of going out for sealed bids on Paris for Van Zant County Road eighteen oh three.
Yes, gentlemen, that's mine. I've been working with the city of Grass Lane, I'm trying to redo County Road eighteen oh three, it's half city of Grass Lane, half county and runs by a nursing home and the the, after the vehicles used, empty and such, and vans, transport the residents of the nursing home, they're heavy duty, one ton and heavier vehicles and the road is full of potholes, but it's rough and it's hard on, so we're coordinating together to redo this road. They've gone out for bids, they had it ground up, cement stabilized and resurfaced. And in doing so, they went ahead and asked for prices for made, but it's not legal for them to do bidding for me. So, I need to put this out for bid for those companies so they can compete, so we can see if we can get this all done at one time and in a uniform manner. So, I make a motion that you approve me to go out to bids. On the work on eight ten three.
Alright, motion has been made.
Second, Pearson.
Second, may here, any discussion? Approximately how mu- how long uh, road is it, or how much are we?
Oh, it's approximately half a mile.
Half a mile. Alright. Uh, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Uh, item number fourteen, discuss consider improve Commissioner Pratt signing affidavit confirming Van Zant County Road thirty one twenty three.
Yes, gentlemen, this is the road I inherited, yeah, reed is your king, this is the one key that brought before court a year or so ago, that was determined by the court that it was a county road at one point in time. And now where they have actually sold the property at the end of the road and developer is, is trying to get through the process of purchasing, and the abstract office is just needing some kind of confirmation that this is actually a county road. And so, they brought this affidavit for me to sign and given the nature and history of this road, I wanna bring this to the court to approve and verify this is a county road and approve me to sign this affidavit.
Okay. So, uh, and are, that is your motion? That's true, alright, is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
Alright, any further discussion?
Because the East Texas Council of God have been notified that this is a county road and.
They just signed it.
Well, do it.
Okay, the number two.
He could do it here, I believe.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Close like sign, motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss consider uh, uh, and approve a bond for Lisa Hutcherson, Van Zant County Assistant Auto during an amount of five thousand dollars.
So, move, Pearson, second.
Alright, motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss their reappointing Sean Davis as the Van Zant County Fire Marshal effective May twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. According to state code, we appoint a fire marshal for a period of two years. And Sean has served us for two years and May twenty seventh, we we start over and he has graciously agreed to continue on if if we will uh, approve it.
Most of the bread.
Alright, motion is made, uh, second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion?
Sean, I'd just like to say, would you continue to let us know anything going on out in the county, you know, rebuilding permits and that sort of thing, so.
Yes, sir.
So, we don't get caught off guard with. But, thank you.
Alright, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number seven, and we we appreciate all work you've done and all work we expect you to do.
Thank you, Sean, you've done a good job. Yes.
Uh, item seventeen, discuss consider contract with Fat Boy Grease Trap Services for County Jail. Uh, this was given to me by Officer Williams and uh, it is a quarterly that they come out and and drain the the grease traps. So, is there any, uh, I make the motion that we approve this contract?
Second, second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I like it.
Wait, wait. For this. Yeah.
I like that name. I'm amazed to be P U setting.
Alright, any further discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Oppose like sign, motion pass. You gonna put a picture in the paper of me approving the Fat Boy Grease contract? Alright, item eighteen, discuss consider maintenance contract with uh, Metalix, Mentolix for County Jail and uh, would you please give us an update on what that is? I read it, but I wasn't quite sure.
Metallix is the live scan fingerprint machine that they use in the jail. Um, it's tied into the DPS frontal histories, so whenever someone's brought into the jail, they're booked into the jail, they can fingerprint them and they get should get uh, instant identifying results, so we can identify if this person's giving a false name. There's, sometimes they have to bring them to jail just to get an identity on them.
Mm-hmm.
It is also, we just got the capability restored for the sex offenders and employment. Um, in the past, for whatever reason, that that function wasn't working on these machine, on this machine.
Mm-hmm.
And we would have to send either manual fingerprint cards for the sex offenders and new employees or for the new employees, we'd have to send them to Tyler to get the fast prints done. So, this, with that capability restored, that will eliminate that.
Awesome, how long have we had this service?
Matter of.
Let's use, okay. Uh, is there a motion to accept the uh, contract maintenance contract?
From you.
Alright, is there a second? Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I say.
Most like sign, motion passes. Item number nineteen, discuss to approve a three year debt book subscription for managing county leases and subscriptions for Gatsby eighty seven and Gatsby ninety six mandates and uh, would you like to tell us, update us on that?
Good morning, James, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
The debt book is a subscription that you approved last year to manage all of our leases. Uh, currently, we have twenty one leases and those primarily are our Rico copiers that everyone uses in their offices. Uh, this year, the Gatsby ninety six mandate is that we have to locate all of our software based contracts, which they're called Sabitas, is what they're calling those. We, uh, I've had, graciously had Nicole and Michelle combing through all the minutes, through all the ledgers. As of today, we found a. Combing through all the minutes, through all the ledgers, as of today, we found approximately thirty of those. Scott has most of them. The, this is a mandate, of course, you know, those wonderful mandates that cost the county. That has been passed down to us from the government of county, that this has to appear in our financial audit each year. If it doesn't appear, then we are out of compliance, uh, and, uh. I do not wanna be out of compliance in our software, in our financial. So last year, I came to the court and the lease cost us eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. I mean, it's a total software package that my office is having to run. It's separate from the net data financial package. This year, they're going to add the software component to that. Because the twenty-twenty-three, the twenty-twenty-three, we have to have the software in our audit, so. Unfortunately, the, we have the tier that is for seventy-five. Cause those, uh, the, the base is according to how many leases and how many subscriptions you have. And so I chose the tier of seventy-five, I think that will get us through that, and, uh, we have to sign a three-year contract. The first year, but the contract does not tie us to that, it does, if we don't see a need for it any longer, we can get out of the contract. Uh, but the first year is eleven thousand, the second year is twelve thousand, and the third year is thirteen thousand. And that's for both components, the lease and the software, uh. That is a whole lot cheaper than they hiring an employee, I can tell you that, because that's what it would take. To satisfy this mandate is another employee from the county, so this is a, uh, le- less expensive avenue. And so I encourage you to, uh, approve this contract.
And there's two thousand dollars for conversion, we, we send our leases to them, and they actually set it all up for us.
We will, we will forward all the leases, and, you know, this is the crazy part about it. They're going to take our leases and break them down just like a principal and interest, just like we're borrowing money for these subscriptions. And that's all this mandate does, is we have to let the public know, you know. How many leases we have, when they're before, when they're due, um, how many years they are, and. We have to do an authorization on them as to the principal and the interest locating on each of those, so. I'm not.
Does this include maintenance agreements?
No.
No.
Software.
Okay.
When we do the maintenance on all the RECO, the RECO copiers, the leases, I have to actually pull out the maintenance part of those. And just do what the machine costs, so these are the sign.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve this, uh, contract with debt book?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, I, could, did I hear you right, did you say this was a mandate that's not being funded?
We are funding it.
It's something we're being done told to do that with no.
And it's a governmental accounting software, that's coming down from the federal.
I just wanted everybody that's on YouTube and that's listening here, it's another one of those bill, but we're, we're told what to do. But we get no, uh, funds for doing it.
We just get a lot of work.
All right, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty, uh, discuss consider approve a resolution to declare the month of April as Fair Housing Month. A few, uh, commissioner court meetings ago, we were in the process of approving some community block grants. And there was governmental requirements that we comply with the Fair Housing Standards Act. And one of the ways to comply with it is to name April as the Fair Housing Month, and so I have to get the resolution out. And, uh, read it. And it's not in here. No, that's.
I got it right here, anybody wanna read it?
I have it, there it is, I found it, sorry, I was on the wrong page. So this is a very simple, and I actually borrowed it from the city of Will's Point, because, uh, it's a resolution. Whereas adequate housing is a basic need and right of all people, whereas April is the anniversary of the enactment of the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Title three of the Civil Rights Act, which states that discrimination in the sale and rental of housing is illegal. When based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, and whereas the Fair Housing Amendment Act was nineteen eighty-eight. Extended fair housing rights on the basis of familiar status to families with children. And on the basis of handicap to disabled person, and whereas Van Zant County supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing. In order to heighten public awareness, the county wishes to focus public attention, uh, on, in April as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, being hereby proclaimed by the power vested in the commissioner's court of Van Zant County of April twenty-twenty-three. Be declared Fair Housing Month in the county of Van Zant County, means that, and, uh, encourage all citizens and community organizations. Celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities of neighbors and supports the goal of equal housing opportunity for all. And that's the proclamation, is there a motion to pass this? All right, motion made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, uh, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item twenty-one, discuss consider seeking court approval to acquire armored vehicle, uh, through the grant program. This will be Sheriff Carter.
Good morning, it's back again, we talked to you about, uh, getting consent from the court to, uh, seek, uh. A grant for an armored vehicle, as we discussed in the past, we had the MRAP, citizen ten thirty-three program, the federal government, the heavy armored vehicle. I believe from what I've read, the vehicle weighs about eighty thousand pounds, it has a big, wide, pasty, it takes a lot of road. Road bed for it to get down and take the, kind of hard on some of the bridges and things, and the mobility around town, uh. We found out, Erin McLeish done some work for us, we found out about a year and a half ago, uh, there was a request sent to Brink's, Brink's Armored Cars. Breaking through, it does armed car service, they donate those vehicles out, along with, when they're done with them, they'll donate it out. We're on the list, one of those vehicles, be, there's not a program, not, there's not any vehicles in the program right now, we're on the list, I don't know how far we are down, so it's possible. This grant program, my understanding, isn't be a hundred percent grant, to cover the cost, but if we wanna get the court's approval to seek, you know, smaller armored vehicle for use by Sheriff's Office.
And what, what situations would you use it in?
Situations where we had, uh, let's say, barricaded person, where there's possibly shots been fired. Probably go to officers going into harm's way, they're, they're about this to cover, you have to get in close to the house. They've had, boy, the MRAP a few times here. I wouldn't want shirts off that point of the murder-suicide, those type of things, where we have to get in the scenes. And you're not sure if you can get there exactly, what's, what you're going into, so.
It's to protect, protect officers.
Yes.
More so than, than our vehicles.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, especially these people.
Special, okay.
Didn't we have something like that after?
That's the MRAP we've got, is an eighty thousand pound big heavy vehicle, it's a, it's a lot of vehicle, but like I say. The width of it getting down some of the city streets, we had come into one of the cities and been in town, especially if there's a, a crowd, people maneuvering that thing around. You got to put a stool, a rider, and, uh, it's about eighty thousand pounds weight, getting down some of the city streets, to down some of these county roads.
She encrusted the county road.
That's what we wanna avoid, yes.
What we do with this vehicle when you get the move?
There is a demand, there's a waiting list with the government, or H's that want that MRAP. What I was hoping to do is take that MRAP and then trade somebody out for a lighter, like a Bearcat or some type of smaller armored vehicle. Right now, there's nothing in the program, they don't have a swap per se, when you're done with something, you turn it in, there's a waiting list to get it. We'd have to get on the waiting list for a smaller vehicle, which is something we can look into, we're looking all avenues to get these, cause these vehicles. Those Bearcats start out, I think, around quarter million dollars, and then they're, they're armored at that, but then they up-armored, and they're in those suns, people up, they get expensive.
Is there a motion to allow the sheriff? All right, so I can say, okay, uh, any further discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, this will end our open session, the commissioners will now go into closed executive session. In compliance with section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code. To seek advice of his attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, consultation with attorney regarding matters. Protected by the attorney-client privilege, uh, and also to debate, uh, deliberate, purchase, exchange, lease, or sell of property. Uh, so at this time, we will end our open.